Protect people or correct problems if they have been caused. So they had no specific concrete threshold that you could evaluate or decide was actually good and inadequate. In addition, they had never committed to or specified which actions or what types of mitigation would actually be implemented at particular points. And so you were never in a position, the state engineer was never in a position to be able to evaluate whether or not there would actually be something effective that could be done and would be done by the Southern Nevada Water Authority. So without those two things, there can't be a valid mitigation plan. There can't be a valid management monitoring mitigation plan. And the courts have been clear about that. The Nevada Supreme Court in another case dealing with the same issue made that crystal clear. So we went back down and Judge Estes, the judge in our case, had made it clear that those had to be proven by evidence by the Southern Nevada Water Authority or the state engineer could not approve the 3M plan. Nonetheless, despite the fact that the state engineer recognized that he had to deny the application, he gratuitously went ahead and approved 3M plan again. So we have appealed that. And as you can imagine, the Southern Nevada Water Authority, along with support from the state engineer, the Southern Nevada Water Authority has appealed the denial of its applications. That's the hearing that we're all going to be here for on November 12th and 13th. It'll be here in the State District Court in Ely. Judge Estes is a senior judge from another part of the state. I think he may now live in or be based out of Carson City, used to be Yearington in Mason Valley on the west side of the state. Judge Estes is the judge who ruled in our favor and sent it back down to the state engineer with directions to apply the proper legal standard on both the availability of water issues, which the state engineer did grudgingly, and also on the 3M or monitoring mitigation issue, which the state engineer still has refused to do. So we will be there arguing these issues. There'll be six teams of lawyers. I have one colleague, a junior attorney who's worked with me now for over a decade herself. We'll be here arguing for you folks and for all of your allies in the Great Basin Water Network and in various communities, small rural communities from Calio in Utah to Lund to Preston in White River Valley to Baker and on down the line, actually. You also have sister communities and allies in Lincoln County. Lincoln County, for those of you who don't know this, your county commissioners have done a steadfastly admirable job in resisting the pressures and the temptations of the Southern Nevada Water Authority. They've been threatened, they've been baited into trying to, the Sunwau people have been trying to get your county commissioners to sign some kind of an agreement and get into bed with Las Vegas and the Southern Nevada Water Authority. That is what happened to Lincoln County many years ago. And ever since then, the later commissioners and the residents of Lincoln County have been angry and resentful, but they've essentially been in a contractual situation where the county cannot formally oppose Southern Nevada Water Authority and can't take a position in protest of this project. So we do work with people in towns like Panaca, Alamo, Urson, Peoche in Lincoln County because they're right there with you. They've been testifying in the hearings and opposing it, but you are lucky to live in a county that stood up for its residents and its water and is still there outdueling the Southern Nevada Water Authority in Clark County despite the fact that the Southerners in the state have all the money and the political clout. So we'll all be there and we'll be presenting the arguments that I've already sort of outlawed for you. Obviously, the state engineer and his lawyers will be arguing different position. Sunwau will have its lawyers arguing for their rights or their applications, I should say. And there are lawyers who represent pre-Indian tribes, the E'lisha Shoneye tribe, the Duckwater Shoneye tribe, and the Confederated Tribes of the Goshu Reservation, which is up a bit north of here, as you know. And those are all our allies as well. And you may know that there are areas in Spring Valley in particular, the swamp cedars, that have been of tremendous cultural and spiritual significance to these tribes. And those are definitely at risk along with folks like Mr. Bogler and the old ranchers and farmers who would be impacted. So they'll be arguing as well. And there'll be a lawyer on behalf of Millard and Jewett Counties in Utah. Those are counties that recognize that they can be affected too. Impacts to Snake Valley, which could result even just from the pumping in Spring Valley, even without the Snake Valley applications ever having been heard, they would affect Millard and Jewett Counties eventually over time. So they also will be arguing in that case. I hope people who are interested will come. I'd like for people who are directly affected or concerned about this to be able to witness the process as it plays out. Judge Estes did a good job in his ruling in 2013. Judge Robison, who has since passed away, did a great job in a similar ruling in 2008 or 2009. Can't remember. I think it was actually 2009 when he finally handed the decision down. And we have not had these specific issues in front of the Nevada Supreme Court, but they've also ruled in our favor in the past. And based on, excuse me, based on other rulings they've issued, we feel strongly that our position is in line with the law and with the courts. And we're hoping that we'll get a good outcome this time. And this time, if we get a good ruling and it's substantively conclusive, we may once and for all put these applications in this project to bed. I can't promise that, but there's a good possibility that if the courts hold true to their previous interpretation of the law, that this could be the end of the pipeline project, at least for the time being. No one can predict the future unless people will come back and try something new. So it would be a huge victory for all of us, for all of you folks, all of your allies who are not here tonight, if we could turn this very unwise and destructive proposal away once and for all. So I guess I'm here not just to give you a pitch about the importance and the encouragement to come to the hearing, but to let you know where things stand. It's still an ominous threat, and we certainly have not let up in any regard, but I want you all to take some heart from the fact that for at least the last 15 years, we've been turning them back over and over and defeating them over and over. And let's see if we can't do it one more time and maybe for good in court on November 12th and 13th. And then inevitably, it will go to the Nevada Supreme Court, but we don't know when yet. So I think that's enough of an update. I can go on as a lawyer, but I'll now just answer questions. Are you having? Yes.
For the record, Henry Bogler, it's bad enough that they're going to monitor the water table as it drops, but then when they come to mitigate with their cadre of lawyers. And I have, I'm upstream, I'm Bedouin, a little snow in winter time, few springs in the mountains, I can survive, but I'm upstream. I'm the canary in the cold one. My springs will go dry first. So I have, for instance, a five gallon a minute spring that goes dry. So then I've got to go to court, get a lawyer, try to mitigate, spend tens of thousands of dollars for a five gallon a minute spring? I mean, at what point in time does, you know, arrogance breeds hubris, and these folks are full of it. So is it the five gallon a minute spring stops the project no more, or do they get me with a thousand paper cuts?
Well, I guess my answer, Mr. Bogler, is our strategy is to never let it get to that point.
I understand, but if it gets there...
Their strategy, I think, is probably to try and let you and others die by a million paper cuts. But maybe that's the wrong way of putting it. I think that you got it right. They're going to set up a system where they're basically the fox guarding the hen house or the coop. They're going to be the ones collecting the data, doing the monitoring, they'll make the determination as to whether or not an impact has been caused by their pumping. They'll make the determination, given the system they've set up, in the future, they'll figure out what it is that they'll make a determination on the basis of, and that will be whether or not there's any impact at all. They control all of this process, and then they control the decision making about what, if any, mitigation actions to take. For you, for other affected water rights holders, for the county, even for the state engineer, if anyone wants to intercede and try and challenge the Sunwau course of action, they are going to have to come up with the resources, whether it's money for a lawyer, money for a hydrologist or engineer. In the state engineer's case, staff and money to enable them to fight with Sunwau, which as we know, has billions of dollars in annual revenue. Their setting up a monitoring and mitigation system, which as you've kind of intimated, would be crushing for any ordinary person in the affected areas to try and protect themselves in. So their system would definitely, over time, if you saw decisions going the wrong way, you'd either be gradually cut to death, if you will, or lose your water in different increments, or you bankrupt yourself fighting them. That's the way it's set up.
Okay, that's fair enough.
We hope to prevent that from ever happening. And the courts are ruling in our favor, Mr. Bogler, so let's hope we can keep that going.
I did just want to add this. Chairman, we are not going to show the film tonight. I apologize on that. That was a little technical difficulty. But I do intend on continuing with any questions that any officials may have, and of course, the public here, and especially, you know, we have Sidney in here, you know, to answer some of those questions about the legal case or anything else. I just wanted to hop in here and thank you.
Where does the governor stand on this thing? He's from Vegas.
Yeah, the honest answer is I'm not sure. Governor Sisalak has actually in the past made public statements against the pipeline project or at least questioning whether it was necessary and a wise idea.
Do you know how much money that is? Fifteen and a half billion dollars is enough to fill 32 semi-loads, because I weighed it before, 77.4 ounces is a million dollars, $100 bill. Motors, trucks, take 32 semi-loads to haul it in 53-foot trailers.
I'll show up with trucks.
Yeah, I will too. If you don't know, I'll figure out where to get water.
Well, I'll just say this. A fifteen and a half billion dollar figure you're mentioning is a gross underestimate of the actual cost of this project.
How big is the pipeline?
The pipeline, I can't remember anymore whether it's...
Almost eight foot.
Eight feet in diameter.
If they pull our water off before it goes down to nothing, then what do we do with our water? Because you know, there's not enough snow now, it's climate change to replace that water.
Yeah, we could talk for a long time about all of the ways in which this project is insane and unsound.
What's happening?
And how alarming, and how their justifications don't even make sense themselves.
What happens if they make it go down, isn't it?
Well, they need, they need over time, as the Colorado River flows over time, it's been declining.
In 84, it was a lot of the public just spillway.
Excuse me. We're trying to learn if the public college asked, you've asked too many questions or repetitions of them. So let's ask somebody else.
I used to have a gentleman, he rode on my bus occasionally, he was coming from over in Snake Valley, and his son does whatever you do on this water stuff, finding out where it is and all that. And according to his son, and he was a guy that was really, I mean, he was a very well-educated on, that the Great Basin, the water here was created by glaciers way back. And if they suck all this water out of here, there won't be any water to fill that thing back up because it was, it's been from the past that this is all collected. So this isn't a pool of water, it's just going to keep coming back every year. And another thing, when you kick all the cattle out and the sheep, those help keep the elk and the deer that we have, a lot of people come to this county for. And when those cattle and sheep and stuff are out around there, these people go out and they clean the springs and make sure there's water. Well, if nobody's doing that, then the deer and the elk are moving out too, and the same with the feed and that type of stuff. So make sure that the country people, and I was raised on a ranch in California, that helps your economy here in the city of Ely.
Did you have a question or were you just...
No, I just wanted to ask that because I don't know if we're aware that this water pool is not going to come back.
Well, I agree. It is true, and some of the hydrologists have pointed out that much of the water that would be pumped out by this project would be what's often called fossil water. It's ancient water. It's taken a very long time to accumulate. And the more fundamental point may be that this project is premised on the idea of pumping far, far more water out of these basins than can ever be recharged.
And then if we have any water, we won't either.
Yes.
How come this state engineer has not been held in contempt for not denying that monitoring thing that the judge said should be denied along with the other?
Well, I'll answer that question in two ways. One is, no one has sought to have the state engineer held in contempt, and I don't think any judge yet has felt that it's gotten to the point where that would be appropriate. I think it's in this situation where the state engineer, as much as I do disagree with him and with them as a collective staff, they have a particular view of the law and the policy that they believe is correct. I personally think it has more to do with political pressure in this instance than with a genuine belief about their correctness. And maybe that in this last ruling where they finally denied it, they complained about denying it, that they dropped a few crumbs showing that they really recognized that this shouldn't be granted. But that's just my own interpretation, picking through their ruling. I will say this, that it's not unheard of and it's not necessarily contemptuous for someone in the state engineer's position to rule in a contrary fashion, even if the judges have interpreted the law in a different way. There would come a point where it could be contemptuous, it would be appropriate to discipline them, but I don't personally think it's come to that point yet. As outraged as I may feel or be about the positions that the state engineer takes, I just don't know that contempt of court is really what would be called into play.
Well, what would be the point of having the judge rule on that if somebody just said...
Well, the judge, the courts still sit in ultimate authority, decision-making power. The state engineer has finally, he has finally come to heel, if you will, by denying these applications despite the fact that he did not want to. As for the 3M plans, I don't know, you could interpret that as an inappropriate gratuitous approval that is inconsistent with denying the applications. You could also look at it as a way of perhaps trying to appease Sunwau. Or you could look at it as the state engineer is still hoping courts will change their position, and if they do, then he'll be in position to allow the 3M plan to be implemented. Yes.
On that 3M plan, if it came down to that, is there a particular reason why there's no check and balance on that? I mean, is it something that hasn't been addressed because it hasn't got to that point? Or is there the gallant excuse from having the check and balance to where the fox isn't guarding the hen house?
Well, when you say check and balance, do you mean something like the state engineer having control?
Well, or having somebody other than them deciding when the water table, you know, become a detriment and this, like Hank was talking about. Why isn't there more than one party involved in that so that they can't make the ultimate decision of wait until they drain it dry and then say, oh, well, okay, we've taken enough?
Well, I think I need to say at least two things in response to that. One is, they will not be the only party or agency involved, but they will be in control. They have set the whole thing up so that they're the ones who get to make the decision. They will be consulting with federal agencies, but as one of the people in here pointed out, the BLM really doesn't stand up to the Southern Nevada Water Authority. They're very timid, they're very docile and deferential to the SNWA people. And the system has been set up so that without Sunwau's approval or vote, nothing can be done, no decision can be made, no action can be taken. So they effectively control everything. Why that's been done? It's been done that way because that's what Sunwau wants. And because they're the ones designing the plan. Now, the second answer is, the state engineer, or reasons that maybe I don't want to get too speculative about, has conceded or agreed that that approach is adequate. And has claimed that because he legally has the authority to step in and do something about it, if he decides that there needs to be a change or an action taken, that that is all that is required to make this a reliable approach or system for monitoring and managing all of these basins and all of these wells and all of this water. It's preposterous. The state engineer cannot barely even keep up with these hearings at the front end of the process when Sunwau buries him and his staff and paper and computer printouts and things like that. It's not, it's obviously not sound to suggest that you can let the applicant, Sunwau in this case, be the one who controls the determination of whether or not the applicant is doing something impermissible. But the state engineer nonetheless has rationalized it and basically said, we always have authority. I always have the authority to step in if it doesn't actually get implemented the way Sunwau plans it will be. But essentially, Sunwau is saying, trust us, we'll be in control, and the state engineer is in effect saying, we trust you, and trust us that we'll do something about it if it doesn't turn out right. That's not a sound or valid basis under the law for approving a project.
And there's no way, and there's no way to have it handled somehow. I mean, I'm not a big...
Oh, there could be, of course.
Not a big environmentalist, you know, advocate, but that would be an ideal spot that maybe they would help, you know, because they're concerned about the environment and how, you know, lack of water affects wildlife and mice and grouse and everything else, you know. To me, it should, like I say, it should be more, there should be more hands involved in it than just, you know, Peter and Paul.
You're correct, and we've been arguing that for many years, and there are perfectly feasible ways to design a system that would have other parties in control, would have a neutral decision maker, or would have meaningful power or authority vested in the county, or more actively in an agency that may or may not be more trustworthy, like the USGS, I think is a very trustworthy agency. I don't know what the BLM is. I think the people working these agencies do their best, but there are problems. But yes, it could be done the way you're suggesting it. And I would just point out that when you say, what about checks and balances? If this project is approved, if that 3M plan is put in place, there won't really be a check. But there is right now, and we are it, fighting in the hearings, fighting in court, and the judges, and I must say, and I don't know how you all feel about your court system, but in my experience over the last 15 or 16 years, or more like 14 or 15 years, the judges in Nevada have been very impressively principled in how they've looked at this case. They're, I'm sure they're aware of all the political and financial pressures trying to get the deal done and the project approved. They have continually sided with us, they've continually done the right thing and reversed the state engineer. So your courts, both the Supreme Court and your district judges, they actually have been the all-important check on this process, been what has kept the state engineer from just rolling over and letting it happen.
So if they, if they make this, if they prevail in this, do we still have any options? If they control the 3M plan, the mitigation plan, and everything else, and we have nothing set up, where are you from there? Would we be able to, you know, it looks to me like, you know, if somebody takes something from you, they make it equal back or better. So if we throw all of our eggs out in one basket and the judges aren't the same way or something happens, where are we?
Well, if the judges reverse themselves in effect and rule that these applications should be granted and that this 3M plan is valid, where you are, there are two things that I would say. There is still a level of federal review that I haven't addressed, and there is, at the current time, there's no valid federal right of way for this project because Southern Nevada Water Authority and the BLM violated the laws and were ruled by a federal district judge in Las Vegas as not having a valid right of way. So that was reversed and remanded, and they have yet to satisfy that. Now, as your county commissioners know, there is a piece of legislation that's being proposed for Congress in DC in which the Southern Nevada Water Authority has tried to slip some language that would get them out of that trap. But right now, they're stuck in a trap where they either have to come up with a way of meaningfully mitigating and compensating, not for senior water rights holders, this is federal environmental law, but for wetlands that they would destroy, the wet meadows that they would destroy. They would have to compensate it with equal acreage or greater acreage of the same type of habitat or area. That's impossible with this project in this area. So right now, they're sort of stuck on the federal level. I mention that, Steve, because that is one way in which it would still be blocked, and as long as we prevent that law from being passed in Congress, and your county commissioners have written a letter to the delegation, your senators and your congressional representatives, urging them to not support those particular provisions of the statute, then that is one way in which you can protect yourself and defend against the project. That's probably not a guaranteed solution, but there are federal levers that may still exist to prevent or limit certain types of pumping and wells in the future. And for now, they can't do anything, but they don't have a right of way. Separately from that, I would say that if we were to fully lose this case and this project were to be approved and built and pumped, and the 3M plan or what you had to operate with, here's the situation, and I think Mr. Bogler recognizes the problems with it. It will be incumbent on anyone who's affected by this to bear the burden, which is probably going to be costly, to go to court, initially to go to the state engineer and complain and demand that some kind of action under the mitigation plans, but also under the water law be taken to either reduce Sunwau's pumping or force them to compensate or mitigate for the impacts they're causing. That is, in theory at least, perfectly available, and the 3M plan is supposed to provide for that, but it is all up to Sunwau unless someone's willing to stand up to them. In other words, if Sunwau doesn't out of the goodness of their heart do the very protective, responsible thing, and you end up seeing your spring run dry or go down, it gets flow, or your well has to be drilled deeper because of their falling water table, unless they do the right thing, which there's no reason to believe they will, you will have to go, I'm sorry to put it in these terms, but this is the reality, you will have to go to Sunwau first, the state engineer second, and the court third if necessary, and make your case as to what's happening to you, why it's Sunwau's fault, and what needs to be done to make you whole. And if the system Sunwau has proposed is definitely set up to make that as burdensome as possible on individual folks who are impacted. I'm sorry, that's a negative answer.
It won't be white pine county. It's like, these guys from California, they're going to, I don't know where they go from here, but when it's taken, you know, you're not going to, you're not going to bring those wet meadows back. They have nothing to trade and, you know, Hank, he's not going to, he's seen what fights cost, and when they take it from him, they're going to take him to his grave, same way with all the old folks.
Well, I agree, and that's, you know, I just want to say that I don't not understand that serious concern, and that has been a big part of our argument and our fight. And if you're asking me what happens if we lose, all I can say is, there are ways in which you can still try and protect yourself, and there's still a chance that the Southern Nevada Water Authority's, whatever, 3M system, I don't even want to call it plan because it's not really truly a plan right now, that it will work for you, but it isn't designed to work for you. It's designed to work for them, I'm sorry to say.
Sidney, I'd like to point out that that's why the Great Basin Water Network was formed, is to fight this in this way, and we are, we're at our limits and we haven't had help from the community at much at all. We've, I had a yard sale one time at the E'lisha Shoneye tribe, and that's the only time I've ever had a really good donation come in to, into Great Basin Water Network, and we need help from everybody.
Excuse me, but we don't have that option for you during public comment. This is particularly part of the meeting agenda is for Q and A questions and answers.
Yes, and I want...
Forgive me.
That's okay.
That's for public comment, so let's wait.
I wanted to say to the commissioner for your question, I do just want to say, Delaine, as much as we work together and agree a few about most things, I feel like this community and the county have been very supportive, have been very helpful allies, so I don't want that impression.
I just wanted to know at county level, if we have any teeth as far as if there's word to get to a point, you know, denying building permits, zoning, you know, just these things, tools we have at the county level, if any of those could throw up obstacles or if they can just run right over that.
Thank you for asking that question. It's a very good question. The answer is, yes, there is a set of tools that the county has that might be, I want to say might, because it hasn't been tested in quite the context of this situation, but a decision was issued by the Nevada Supreme Court in 2011 that held that Washoe County's land use regulations and permitting system empowered it to deny a special use permit for a water project that was going to transfer water from one place to another, and it would have harmed part of the county. And because the state engineer had already granted the application, it was considered approved and permitted, but the county still had to issue and it refused to issue a special use permit, and that was consistent with its ordinances or land use code and regulations. Because in, every county has a general police power to protect the public interest and the general welfare of its residents and of the county as a county. So that means that the county has authority, if it does it in a thorough and consistently applied way, to establish standards and procedures for which a project that is going to be built on land in the county and that is going to have some kind of impact on natural resources and land in the county goes through a review and permitting process, the county can deny it, and it has the power or the authority to deny a permit to prevent a project from being built and operated, even if the state engineer approves it. Now, I... Now, I put it in the...